Okay.
Okay, we're gonna salute the flag first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Asher, for our tour of the building. And now we're gonna hear our public input statement.
The first public input session is a twenty-one minute session, with each person having no longer than three minutes in which to make a statement. But a second public input session may be held at the end of the meeting, if allowed by the board chair. Each speaker will give his or her name, town, and reason for speaking. Public input is designated for district residents, but the school chair may, I'm sorry, but the board chair may grant non-residents the opportunity to address the board. Statements concerning subject matter that falls under the law regarding executive sessions, for example, matters involving personnel, cannot be made during public input. We as a community pledge to treat each other as we wish to be treated. We pledge to seek understanding when there may be disagreement. Regardless of outcomes or opinions, we pledge to move forward with respect. This is time for comments or questions for the board, but please be aware that some questions cannot be answered at this meeting.
Do we have any public input tonight?
We don't have a lecture in for you, but we have a task.
Nobody? Okay, moving on to minutes of August twenty-ninth.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of August twenty-ninth.
Oh, second.
All votes in favor?
Just a question. Um, one of the things that it says on those minutes is that the board will be updated on the enrichment opportunities that have been developed by the specialists to support students in the weeks and months ahead. More information will be forthcoming as plans are implemented. Do we have any indication as to when that will be on the agenda? When those updates will be happening?
We can prepare something for the next agenda.
Thank you.
Any other questions, directors, column? Okay, all votes in favor? Opposed or abstaining? Okay, now we go to the minutes of September fifth.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of September fifth. Any second?
Questions, discussions, corrections? Nancy?
Um, reviewing the minutes on paragraphs twelve and thirteen of the board's norms, there was a discussion, um, well, it's easiest for me. The board was engaged in two or three discussions, one involving board norms, one involving adherence to board policies, and one involving the assumption that the executive session was about an employee. My comments, if you look at paragraph twelve of the minutes, addressed the haste in hiring a new assistant principal for MBES. While I was willing to own the fact that I did not attend the interview, I wanted to reference the fast pace used in the hiring process, which failed to allow time for new board member to gather on spots and determining the need for the new hire. I then stated that the executive session was requested due to issues around adherence to policy not to discuss the new hire. I suggested we need to follow board policies or change them. I did not ask what policy was violated. That person was, I believe, Nancy, the other one. I was aware of the policy originally referenced. I couldn't remember the letters identifying it. I was asking for the policy name, not asking for clarification about a policy. And I respectfully ask that my comments be really accurate when writing the minutes in the future. The next person to speak was Josh Taylor. This would be paragraph thirteen. Josh stated clearly that he felt there was a systemic failure by the administration to follow board policy, and it was quite evident in the live stream that Ms. Whalen made a motion based on Josh's and on Josh's, um, comment. And I quote from the video, "strong accusation about the administration and colleagues here." She requested that the board table further, I think she made a motion, I'm sorry, table further discussion and go into executive session at the next board meeting on the nineteenth. That would be on live stream at twenty-four minutes, if you want to reference it. The motion to enter an executive session to discuss systemic policy violations by the administration was duly seconded and unanimously passed by the members present. However, the minutes in paragraph thirteen stated that Ms. Whalen made the motion, and it was seconded by Ms. Genesek to table further discussion regarding the assistant principal at Noble El, uh, North Berwick Elementary School. At no time on live stream did I hear Mr. Taylor mention anything about the assistant principal at MBES, which makes me wonder how this motion could have been so distorted when written into the minutes. The minutes need to reflect accuracy. And without bias, um, I think it's important that we really...
I would agree. I will, uh, this is a great opportunity to talk about the minutes.
I'm just gonna say that.
The minutes in all years past do not work through the verbatim responses. This has been a very active board, which is good. But there does need to be some, uh... We need, we need to talk about how these minutes are gonna be going. Line by line, person by person, is not going to happen. It cannot happen. So, in the next set of minutes, you'll see, I actually put in the, the actual YouTube with the option for the CC, and I tried very hard to do more of a, just capture the summary. This is too much for us to be doing. The, the board can, the folks can look at it. So it's been summarized. I am happy to like make adjustments based on, on your support.
I understand that you want to summarize things.
Yeah.
It was so, the, the paragraph twelve really didn't even reflect what I was trying to say. Paragraph thirteen was this, I mean, it was...
Okay, well, and I appreciate, I appreciate that.
Wanted to bring, yeah.
Yep, so we can do some adjustment to that. But I, this is, um, a very active board. And so we need to figure out a way to be more, um, in line with the summaries. It is, and so I'll, I can bring forward an adjustment for folks for the next meeting, if you'd like to, or you can trust them to do that and, um, accept them as amended. It's up to you.
Can we, would it be possible, and you're misquoted, so you speak more, but, um, can you do what you did part of the amendment? Can you put the video link into, once that way? Like you can do your best to work your magic, and then the video link will be in there regardless? So like people can go and see the actual things?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah.
Minutes are really supposed to just be summaries?
Yeah.
Motions and votes?
Yeah, typically, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's, we've gotten to a place of being, um, you know, it's, it's hard. It's a hard, it's a hard spot to be because we want to be able to sort of capture the, I guess, the flavor of a meeting. Um, but there, there is no question that even when I'm doing this, I'm trying super hard to be as neutral as I can be. But, you know, you, you feel that it's biased, and, and that's okay. Like, I can take that. So I'm gonna try to look through the different lens and try to keep it more, um, as neutral as possible. With that, that means it will not be as detailed because I can't catch it off. You know, and it does change things if I miss something.
Right, and that's why we have, if you put the video link right on there, I mean, people can just click on it and see the whole thing.
And I think, Josh?
Thank you. Couple of things that we could focus on. I do think that motions made and votes should be accurate. You know, if there was something to emphasize, that, that would be something to make sure that is a hundred percent accurate. They also, one of the, one of the things that we might be able to do as a board is do a better job of, of asking our chair for recognition to speak. Sometimes we're just speaking out, and I can imagine that that makes it incredibly difficult.
Yeah, it is a little bit more difficult.
But if we can, if we can simply ask for the chair's, um, permission to speak, which is, which is a process that we should be following, um, then Nancy, you actually can, can slow things down in the meeting, can, can get clarification and make sure that we're communicating well and hearing each other well. And I think that that would be a benefit to the minutes as well.
Okay.
And I think it's also a lot for Sue to listen, take the notes, and be able to participate in.
Exactly.
And there's so many things that we need her to participate in.
Well, and part of the reason, I apologize, part of the reason that it takes a while to put the minutes out is because I need to go back. I, I, I have them on video, but I also, I record the meetings so that I can go back with my earbuds and just go through things as best I can. But I'm also doing another full-time job at work. Like, things are happening on the daily. So that's why there's a delay in getting the minutes out immediately. So I would love to go back to briefer summaries and help, help, you know, expedite things.
The, the links would be huge.
Yeah, absolutely. I have no problem with that. I, I, honestly, I was like, hmm, do we want to like put this up?
It is hard to find on our website.
It is very difficult.
Hard to find.
All right, it's stuck you. Hard to find on the website.
Yep. Save the bookmark.
Okay, so yes, duly noted.
Any other?
And, pardon me. Can you forward me your, your...
I would like to be able to do that.
Okay, can you hand it to me?
I'll just give you a copy.
That's all.
Yeah, so just because the question was whether, or, or just recently, my, my preference would be just to have it be able to be viewed.
Yeah, that's fine.
So that would be my preference, and I would encourage board members to just, there's no rush to approving minutes, so, just for the sake of accuracy.
So we have a motion to accept. Do you want to vote on that, or do you want to table it?
We have to vote. We have to make that.
The person who made the motion can amend it and table it.
Did you make a motion?
No, you didn't. It was you.
Oh.
First one. I, I, I will retract my motion and make a motion to table the minutes again.
Second, we pass second minute. Any further discussion on minutes? Okay, all those in favor? That motion? Opposed or abstained?
I don't know if I was supposed to vote on that.
You can vote. I think because you're here, and we're gonna table it. Yeah, so you're here presently, and if we had voted to accept it, you can't vote.
Yeah, and I know.
Got carried away.
And we're gonna go to September nineteenth.
I make a motion to table the minutes of September nineteenth, so that we have a meeting to review.
Okay, I did get this out of...
Yeah.
Earlier.
Yeah, um, the, the policy under the board is that they'll be out with the agenda. Now, if the agenda comes out in Friday, the minutes would have to come out in the Friday as well.
Where did you post the numbers?
Oh, I found it. So you're touched.
Can I tell you of a correction?
Sure, sure.
So just before the word minutes, um, all members voted, uh, in favor except Mr. Taylor. It should be, and also Ms. Sue.
Okay, thank you. I honestly was hoping somebody would just catch that because I didn't know. I hadn't, I did not see Nancy, so I was like, okay, somebody will catch it. Thank you.
Sue?
Yes?
If I could ask you, on these current board members at the top, could you spell my last name with an E-L-L, Stefan A-L-L?
Sure.
Yeah, E-L-L.
Good.
Minor, minor.
No, no, no. Somebody spelling in their name is not minor. That's a big deal.
Well, it's in a difficult place, but...
Okay. Okay, those are fixed for that.
Any others? Comments, corrections?
Did the motion say to table these two?
Mr. Taylor made the motion to table, yep.
Did you say?
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor? Tabling these? Opposed or abstained? Okay, Noble Elementary School bleacher.
So we just saw the bleachers, or lack thereof. Um, and that work is scheduled to begin in a couple of weeks, we hope. Uh, so tonight we do have the motion, um, for the, um, the lease purchase of the principal amount of one hundred fifty-two thousand for the bleachers. This was not a budgeted item, um, so...
Yes, it was.
Sorry, thank you, please.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's not gonna end in like, yeah, you're from tech.
That's right, we had the timing thing. Okay, so the motion, if somebody wants to read it, um, it's right at the top.
I don't want to read it, I have a question.
Sure.
Could we get a little background on this? Because both of us weren't on the board when all of this took place.
Mm-hmm.
Just a very, very brief summary.
Sure, sure.
Summary.
Yep.
Um, so, the bleachers down in the gym are not, um, they're mechanical. They have motors, and there's a way to open and close them. And over the course of the many years they've been used here, in the recent year, this past spring maybe, this past winter, they were broken. So somebody probably tried to manually close them or pull them open or something and didn't realize. So the bleachers no longer work. So we needed to get in, um, a, a new set. So in the spring, as we were budgeting, we budgeted for a seven-year lease to, uh, get a new set of bleachers. Thank you.
You're welcome. And that's similar to what, um, was presented during the tour.
Who's building the bleachers?
What's the question? Hazy, Hazy Seating.
Oh, Hazy Seating, okay.
Oh, no, Hazy's not doing it?
Nope, it's R.H. Lord is the company?
The new one. See, you make assumptions.
And is it through GORM saying he's been accepted?
We are doing, it'll be sent through GORM.
Yes.
So does anybody volunteer to be in the motion?
I moved that the resolution entitled "Resolution to Authorize Lease Purchase of New Bleachers in a Principal Amount of $150,000" be adopted in form presented to this meeting. Second?
Any further discussion? Questions? All those in favor? Opposed?
Can I ask a quick question before we move on? Can I ask a quick question before we move on?
Mm-hmm.
What policy did you see that, um, it said the minutes had to go out with the agenda on the Friday?
Uh, after, after.
Okay, because I found something and I don't, I don't quite support that. Thank you.
Okay.
Yep, thanks.
All right, Lebanon Leach Field discussion.
Since Denise is standing, she can begin.
So we have been having conversations over recent meetings about the failed leach bed at Lebanon Elementary School. Um, we have worked with civil consultants, uh, who have consulted, uh, the DEP and all of the entities that kind of need to be involved in that sort of conversation. Um, and it's determined that we needed to replace this leach field, um, to a certain standard. Um, and the cost of that is approximately one hundred twenty-six thousand. It's one twenty-five-nine, I believe is the number. As it was, it's not budgeted. This is not part, part of our budget process. It failed after the budget was approved. Um, we have to figure out how to finance this project. We had talked, I had talked to banks, and banks will not do a traditional lease purchase like with the bleachers because it's not a physical item that they could repossess in theory. Josh, uh, Josh had had the question, what about, um, a credit union? I spoke with legal counsel. They have never seen a credit union do either a lease purchase nor a bond financing. So...
But even when you did check in with them?
It, it's not a viable option. Uh, but it's, you know, good question, another avenue. Um, we, so what we had talked about was bond financing. Now, in speaking with bond counsel, the, um, that's our one, that's our one avenue, to go out and try to get a bond. The other avenue is to finance it by finding savings within our current budget. And what I found out about the bond financing is it takes approximately six to eight weeks to post, to call a meeting, call a referendum, post the documents publicly, hold the meeting, hold the referendum, get a decision by the voters. That's approximately six to eight weeks. There's another couple of weeks in front of that that the attorneys need to prepare the documents. So you're looking at probably two to three months of process for that. Um, and then, at the end, what you hope is that the voters approve the bond financing because they can vote against it as well. Given our desire to have this done before heavy winter sets in and we're not having to pump the tanks routinely, um, what I said about this last week was to find the money. And so I believe I found savings, actual savings or budgeted amounts this year that we can use to cover the cost of this one hundred twenty-six thousand. Wow, yay. So I, given the turnaround time, given that the voters have approved the budget, but I think I have found the savings, I think I would recommend that we move forward in that way. One of the things you asked, Peg, was how much in advance could we start the project and then pay it? Sixty days. And the attorney, the bond counsel recommended that we have both the board approval and the voter approval before we start down that road. So again, that's two to three months before we can start it, which would put us right in the middle. The middle winner. Winner.
Can you give us just a little synopsis before you found all of them?
Yeah. Anything else? It was a very ask, but can you come to my house? So, we have combined lease savings for the bleachers, the buses, and technology of twelve thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. So with, you know, we saved money on the tech lease, lost money on the bus lease. We have that savings. We have, um, in the maintenance and facilities budget, there is ninety thousand dollars of undesignated contracted services, and I'm proposing I use twenty-five thousand of that. We have a twenty thousand dollar budget annually for arsenic removal for the middle school. And what this, in fiscal twenty-four, we ended up doing it very late in the spring, and so it's not due again until the summer of twenty-five. So that is not something we need to spend money on this year. We can spend it and put it into, again, into our twenty-six budget. We removed the rental trailer in North Berwick that we had been storing things through COVID, and that was about fifteen hundred dollars of savings. There were two carpet replacements that we had proposed as of the facilities budget, each five thousand dollars, one at Mary Heard and one in the health center that we would just not do. They're not done, we would postpone them till next year. There was at North Berwick Elementary School, a parking lot light upgrade for seventy-seven hundred. Again, it's not yet done, and I would propose that we push that to next year. We had a renovation of the kitchen at the Mary Heard Academy. And we saved three thousand dollars on the anticipated cost for that. So that's an actual savings. Noble High School has a substance abuse counselor. We budgeted thirty thousand dollars for that. We got a ten thousand dollar grant recently to cover that cost. So I'm gonna take the ten thousand that we budgeted and put it to the grant instead. We saved eleven thousand five hundred on a recently placed copy order for the year, a copy paper order. We, it was less money than we per case than we expected, and we needed fewer cases than we estimated a year ago. So we were able to save that. And then we have a twenty-five thousand dollar contingency line, uh, category eleven. Usually goes for food service in case, but they have such a large running fund balance that I think we can do without that, and I think I would propose we put it toward this. And that told one twenty-six, four fifty. Well done. Well, those are actually savings and things that are already budgeted that I think we can re, repurpose.
So do we have a particular motion to move forward for this one?
You should, yeah, we need to move forward, like the, the board is...
So Kevin could schedule.
Correct.
And this has been on our agenda since late May or June.
So if we approve it tonight, work can start... Oh, and that's my other question. Do we, as Mr. Moore found, someone who could do it at this time of the year?
Um, I, to be honest, I haven't really been involved in that side of it. But I, I think the conversation has been we are eager to get it started before the ground freezes. So, um, I anticipate, I would expect that he asked someone, but...
Okay.
Has a motion moving forward with the leach field?
Second, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Thanks for giving that, Denise.
Thank you.
Heather, you can tell the world. That's a plus. Okay, now we're going to district goals.
So this is a continuation. Again, just to kind of recap, I think everybody had, um, was here last time, but when we, when we're looking at district goals, we took our strategic plan, the four parts of our strategic plan, and we are creating smart goals under each of those areas under the strategic plan. So we've already talked, um, about one of those areas. This time we are talking about high-quality resources. Again, this, this is our first go-through of these. Like, um, we're just, what we're trying to do is present all the information. We had a good conversation about potentially adding something in, um, under one of the academic goals last time. So again, this is a first discussion of this, so, um, of this particular goal. So high-quality resources, um, is the topic of the strategic plan, that area. We commit to a continued focus on recruiting, retaining, and supporting highly qualified, effective, and dedicated team members who will educate, support, and inspire students. We are committed to providing clean, self-safe facilities and learning environments. We will continuously assess curriculum, support services, processes, and resource allocation. So, uh, just taking that top strategic plan area, breaking it down into three separate goals. So the first goal is, um, dealing with the retention of staff. The second goal is, um, looking at the, you know, the strategic, the, the plan from Herriman and Associates, looking at that, and then coming up with, with a plan to address that. And then the third one is the implementation of the annual curriculum review cycles. So, um, just going back up to the top one, um, so we are, um, pre, um, prepared for, um, the twenty-five, twenty-six school year to maintain a ninety-three percent retention rate of highly skilled teachers and eighty-seven percent retention rate of educational technicians through continued implementation of a comprehensive recruitment and retention program, including targeted recruitment efforts at top education programs across New England, competitive salary and benefits packages, where, because we are negotiating, that's a really, um, important piece for us, expand mentorship programs for new hires through analysis and ongoing feedback, and specific professional development opportunities for the newly hired teachers and supporters. So just to give you, I didn't, we didn't pull this, uh, back too far, but just, we had a couple of rough years there with staff turnover because of COVID. I think for those of you who are on the board, you remember that. So in twenty-two, twenty-three, our retention rate for teachers was eighty-two percent. Our retention rate for educational technicians was sixty-three percent. So for twenty-three, twenty-four, our retention rate for teachers was eighty-eight percent, and our retention rate for educational technicians was sixty-five percent. And for coming right now, we are at ninety-three percent retention for teachers, and we are at eighty-seven percent for ed techs. So as you can see, the, over the years, it has, has gone up. Some of that, you know, certainly has to do with our, that negotiations that we did a few years ago, and we're heading into that cycle, which is, again, really important that we, uh, when we start negotiating, we really think hard about that. That's exactly the piece, right, the retention of staff. So then the second bullet is, uh, by June of twenty-five, the district will create and begin to implement a comprehensive facilities plan that addresses the study from Herriman and Associates. So the, the plan will include all of the facilities, pinpoint five key areas for improvement to enhance the quality and safety of our educational environment, begin to address the key areas in different locations, and identify exact spacing needs and potential shifts or upgrades to infrastructure to alleviate the building concerns and age of Lebanon Elementary School and the addition of pre-kindergarten. So that, again, those are what we've identified when we've been talking with Herriman, is it definitely about Lebanon Elementary School and the priority for pre, pre-K. Uh, the, the final one, sorry.
So in terms of our, our budget cycle next spring, will we be looking at this information as part of that, or will it be completed after?
The hope is from Herriman. I mean, they just finished touring, initial tours of the buildings. So they've started that process, and we're getting that, um, in the enrollment, the student enrollment, the, the coming up. Some of it will be reflected in this budget, so we will have some of that information. Some of it we won't. By February, we, that was what they said.
Yeah.
Yes, so, so that's the hope. Um, but if we certainly have big shifts that we need to make, that can't happen next summer, you know, so... Um, but if we certainly have big shifts that we need to make, that can't happen next summer, you know, so. So it's a couple of years out, but really this is to kind of just get that started and get everything identified for that. And as Harriman said, there's a lot of information that has to go out to the community as well and a lot of conversations and input that needs to happen. So the third one is, um, continued implementation of our annual curriculum review cycles resulting in recommendations for programming, improvement and resource allocation. Principal components consist of the main Department of Education, Special Education Audit. So we have a new Special Education Director and this year, and her first, uh, big task is in us, the audit by the Department of Education. Uh, that will, uh, provide us a lot of good information. It always does. Um, and then we have, you know, um, some strengths and areas of, uh, to, to further develop that will come from that. So that will, um, be covered in that. And then high school goes through the NIASC, which is the New England College, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. So they go through that, um, accreditation process for Noble High School. And that starts in twenty-four, so it's starting right now. And this part of the process is the self-study. So the teams are all working on the self-study portion. We're working on Portrait of a Graduate, Portrait of a Noble High School Student. Um, and then it carries over. Uh, next year, um, a little, uh, a core group is coming into the high school to learn about the high school. And then the big, the big two-day piece comes, uh, in a year later, like to the twenty-second comes in. But this, uh, piece is really helpful for us. That self-reflection piece will be very helpful for us. It's ten years. And then the content area review for the, per the curriculum cycle. So we're doing that review process as well. So those are the, um, just the goals that we have identified under this category of the strategic plan.
Do you have a, talking about the content area review curriculum cycle? Do you have like historically which ones have been done in which years? Anything that could, that could be shared with the board?
Dr. Swager's coming into the meeting November seventh to go through the curriculum review and go through some data. So that will all be available.
There's a historical, there's a historical.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? So what else do we have to do?
Did you have another question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just, are we, is the high school accredited now?
Yes.
I didn't know.
Nope, that's a good question. It is.
Curious sometimes.
We could actually, I'll talk to them. They could share the report because it was really.
It's a positive report.
But no, it's good for people to see them.
And typically the high school, when they're going through this process, they do come in and, and update the board. Um, and the board chair, whomever that will be at that time, will, um, get, get the reports in from the ASK as well. So it goes to the high school superintendent's office and chair.
What do we do with the, I'm sorry, did you, I'm gonna ask another question.
It's follow-up. Go ahead.
No, it's not, but the Special Education Audit, what do they do in name for a special education?
Some of it is they, they call some of the files to look for patterns. They look at IEPs.
It's pretty much the same, I think. They attribute similar.
And then we, you know, have strengths that are noted as well as we have some areas that we have to, you know, look at. And then there's financial press to it as well.
And they all, and they report that back to the board too. You, we get them.
I don't think it goes directly to the board, but we can share that information.
Be interesting to hear how we're doing.
I'm just seeking some clarification, um, talking about, uh, school unit goals and objectives. I mean, if you want to follow along, it's policy ADA. Get folks a couple of seconds to get to the, you know. Against ADA, school unit goals and objectives. First, first sentence, right, the board recognizes responsibility to set goals for the effective operation of school unit. Right, and in district, it is responsible, the board should strive to ensure that the resources of the unit are directed toward meeting the educational needs of each and every student. It's the beginning of the second paragraph that I, I'm seeking clarification on. It says, "The board will develop annual goals based on input solicited from a variety of resources." And I think it's been well articulated, saying that variety of resources, what went into the mission and vision of Noble twenty-thirty? Is that, to me, it says the board will develop the annual goals. And, and I recognize that you're sharing goals and your admin team's doing a lot of work. But I didn't, I didn't know if there were board members who had specific goals in mind that they were sharing. It just, that hasn't come up in this process and, um, so again, it sounds like this, that the board's responsibility, and then after that, these goals will be shared with the community, the staff and the students. The administration shall develop appropriate objectives designed to achieve the stated priorities. And I think that, that, that's kind of what I feel this is. But we, we've kind of like skipped the discussion of what, what are this board's priorities, um, when it, when it comes to goals? That's, that's just my interpretation, and I'm, I'm opening up and asking if others feel differently.
I think when we had that conversation.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, speak up as best you can.
So I think when we had that initial conversation, we talked about the strategic plan and all the input, as you alluded to, all the input that went in from board members that were there, from community members that were there, from staff and administrators that were there. And those were those driving pieces, those forces that then provided an opportunity and a framework for us to look at and building those pieces underneath it. And at that point in time, when we had that discussion at the board level, it sounded like the board did not want to shift away from all the hard work that our community put together. So that is, I mean, that's, that's why we're moving in this direction to be presenting you areas under those areas.
It was the board and the community. So the board, I think, put that process together to do that. I just wanted to clarify that. And I did think we had a pretty thorough conversation about whether those wanted to be, or not with this board.
So maybe when we go through the policy, um, work that we have ahead of us, that's something that we tweak so that it reflects how the process actually works and not, I mean, if the board agrees that that's the way the process should continue.
Because I was thinking earlier, so being as like a first-year member on the board, I actually really do agree with Josh on this. Um, I feel like I didn't, when I came on, necessarily know, I wasn't really given, like, here's exactly where our schools stand in test performance, in like this teacher retention number. I could go out and find all of that, but it would be great if like we were given that. Um, and then got together as a board and did some type of a workshop at the beginning of the year to be like, yes, we support that awesome community initiative that happened. But what are like maybe three board goals for this board, like every year?
I think, I think maybe what I'm hearing from you are two separate things. One is what are board goals?
Yeah.
And does that mean what you, you as a board want for goals? That to me is different than district goals.
I'm referring to district goals.
Okay.
Yes, sorry. Yep. Yep, I did just, yeah, I feel like there could be a little more like, um, just clarity on.
Well, I think that the word annual is something.
Right, annual.
May be something that we need to think about, like how do we, uh, how we address that? So because there, because there is the strategic plan that was kind of overarching, but how do you look at that annually? Which I think is what, um, I think that's what we tried to do. Like, we were looking at those things in a way of like, like, what are we gonna focus on based on the objectives? But understand that there's languages, it's interesting, right? People look at it things differently.
And I was thinking before this too, because I just got the email from my corporation, that I as an employee need to fill out my, make my goals and present that to management. And so I was thinking like, because I was thinking, it's like, are we writing these? Because I feel like you guys should be writing them and then presenting them to us. Like, that's a typical corporation structure. Um, I know we're a school, but at the end of the day, it's a business side of it too. Um, so yeah, I agree with Kate. Like, I wonder if we're writing that a little bit to, to kind of support that since you guys are in the day-to-day of it and, um, but I agree that I feel like we did agree that this, our goals are going to align with the strategic plan. I thought that was for everyone.
Yeah, is there anybody who objects to any of those goals or?
I thought that was the conversation that we had, represented them.
Are you talking about two meetings ago to last meeting?
Oh, it's a while ago.
It was the beginning of September. We talked about the strategic plan and then we talked about.
So two meetings ago, yeah.
It was a nine-five meeting.
Right, okay. And I think we talked about, I don't think it was necessary, I think we kind of ended on, we were gonna dive deeper into these goals, but I don't know that we ever said the board is not going to have goals.
I don't think the board said that they were or weren't.
I think we talked, yeah, didn't we talk about like having a workshop?
We talked about having a workshop, but we also talked about the fact that as adminis, the administrative team would take a look at those areas of the strategic plan. So that's what I'm presenting to you for discussion, not for, this is for discussion, not for you to say absolutely. Like, this is a starting point.
Right.
Did you want to talk? You look like you want to talk. I mean, my hand is up too, so.
Go ahead. I'm still formulating.
Okay, um, so I, I'm trying to communicate well and, and maybe I'm not doing a good job of communicating. Like, if I, there are, under the, the Noble twenty-thirty, right, those mission vision, I don't, can we just, am I, what am I calling them? Mission statements or vision statements?
Strategic plan.
Okay, strategic plan. As we talked about, they're not goals, right? But that says strategically, the direction we want to move in, right?
You shared they were not goals.
Maybe I misinterpreted, and I felt that that was agreed upon, that they, they were not, they certainly were not SMART goals. We can agree on that, right? They're not measurable.
Which is why we, yeah, try to break it down, yep. But that was known at the start, and I don't want to interrupt, but that was known at the start, and that's what this process is about.
Correct.
And that's, and so I, I get that that's that sentence, "The board will develop annual goals based on input solicited from a variety of resources." Like, that's a variety of resources because so many people, like teachers and administrators and community members and kids, were all involved in the Noble twenty-thirty. Is that a correct interpretation? Okay, so that, but it's that first process, the board will develop the annual goals based on that. And, and I've, you know, done some, you know, I, I appreciate the evidence-based, um, push for us, you know? When I, I, I looked up, uh, it was from, uh, Duke University, and it's, uh, the optimal number of strategic goals for the organization. And, you know, they are looking at organizations and they say three to five. They said more, more than five, you accomplish nothing because too many things. You know, less, they say less than three is too confusing. Like, people don't find their, their, their fit in what it's supposed to do. Because the board sets the goals and then admin sets the objectives to achieve those goals. And then teachers, you know, buildings, right, and teachers set their objectives in their classrooms or the students they're working to match the admin goals that reach to the, like, do you see how, like a, like a pyramid kind of thing? And so I see, and then I also looked up the, um, eight characteristics of effective school boards. This is from the National School Board Association, which I, my goodness, if you have not looked up, um, the National School Board Association, eight characteristics of effective school board, it's fantastic. Um, in this document, um, there are three out of the eight goals. Three of them are specifically related to board goals, right? In that board members are just as passionate about those goals as what it is and how it goes through. And they mentioned goals forty-four times in this, in this short document. It's really critical. So I guess, you know, if, if I were, so speaking as, as a board member, as I'm sitting in this chair, like, these are not the goals that I write, like, I, I want to see reading go up. I want to see math achievement go up, and I want to see behavior go down. And, and I can quantify those goals, like, those would be my three goals. Everything else can feed into those three things, but I want to talk about one of those three things. And again, this is my personal opinion, right, and I'm, I'm, I'm asking for everybody else's. Like, those would be my three goals. I want to set a mark for reading achievement based on a criterion reference. We don't even know what the baseline is. Guess I'd like to know baseline. And then, uh, what is it, in twelve months, where are we gonna be? And let's be accountable to it. Let's, 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 our, our time and our resources and whatever we have, like, let's be accountable to hitting those marks as our top priorities. And, and, and talking about our regulations, like, that's how I, I see it. And so I just feel that this has not been reflected that. And I'm open to the idea that I'm misinterpreting what it's saying.
Peg, because we did, the last set of ones you presented to us were specific reading and math targets, correct? Eighty-five, what, I don't remember the percent, but they were specific to reading and math, correct?
Yes, correct.
So I, you know, why are we giving them to wheel if we, if that is what you're interested in, is the math and reading?
I think it's like our next point here about the main School Board Association workshop and going to talk to other school boards, I think will give us a lot of clarity on this issue too. I want to see like what's Yarmouth doing, what's, uh, Kenna Bunk School Board doing, like how are they goal-setting and achieving?
So Ally, one thing I do want to say is we did a deep dive in, and I'm not saying Yarmouth, and I'm not, I'm not gonna say which districts per se. We looked at a lot of s- school districts, and a lot of them use their strategic plan as their goals. This board asked for further information to set them up as measurable SMART goals. So that is the charge that we were given by this board. And that is what we've been doing for the last couple of weeks. That's why we presented two. We're prepared to present the third one at the next meeting. Now there's further discussion about, let's pivot and, um.
That's how I'm feeling too. I don't know what you're saying. Are you saying, I don't think we're saying pivot. I think what we're saying is, let's continue to make this the model for every year. So the school board, I think what Josh is saying is, we create, not create the goals with no information, we're creating the goals with the information that's provided by you guys, but creating those three every year, or highlighting the ones that we talked about during this exercise every year, and then just following up with it. So I think we're just having like an issue with the direction that it's coming.
And, and as a board, we, we've asked for our, our baseline data. I know there was data presented last December. And we've, we've, we've talked about the concerns that several board members have with that, with that data, right? We've asked for baseline data. We know we've gotten the norm, the normative, the NWEA through assessment. The district has received that information, but we have not seen that baseline data. We've asked for baseline data for discipline, but we as a board have not seen that data. So it's hard to even have, like, it's hard to set goals when I, as I, I don't even know what our baseline data is, and we've asked for it.
Well, we're going to get it. You're gonna get it in a presentation.
Code of Conduct meeting coming up, that will be, we'll be discussing behavior data and information at that point. Dr. Swager's coming in November seventh to go through data, other data. We met three times last year to talk about data with, and Dr. Swager came a few of those times. Every time it was requested that she come in, she came in and presented information. So we have heard that and we have.
Scheduled it appropriately, so we can get all that.
I think there is also the, there is a discrepancy on what, who believes what the data should be. So I think that's the question, it's like your criterion reference data versus what we're utilizing because that is actually the data that we've been, you know, we have state data that we need to do and all that piece of it. So the question, for us, we need to come to a decision about this, this, um, loggerhead basically regarding assessment. And so the sooner the better, honestly, so that we can move forward. Uh, and I don't know that, I feel honestly like, uh, it's, we're just, we're, there's different pages that we're on regarding this. So we will do that, like, so I guess it is about the conversation.
Well, we've got to present the evidence, and I don't know if she's gonna come in and present the evidence from the NWEA, right? So if you would like us to stop going through, I mean, this takes time. And pathways to success where we address the academic piece, high-quality resources, this all took time. So if this is not a direction you want us to go, we can stop right now.
I do not want you to stop personally.
I would, I would echo that, yes.
I don't want to stop either. I think maybe as a new board member, like at the beginning, I'm sorry, at the beginning of every year, like if there is a new board member, maybe we could have some type of a packet with like a standard set of information that I get coming on, saying, here's where we're at with reading, here's how my third graders are proficient in this. Just so that we know, I mean, we should have that at every given, at any given time, the school should know where that is. So we should know where that is. And I don't think anyone at this table knows what the proficiency level of a third grader is in our district. But are, and I don't know, I'm asking, are there, so once the minutes are posted and we've had a presentation, the link to that presentation is generally posted in the minutes, right? So we can go back and look at last year's presentation. And I'm not saying that that wouldn't be helpful to start. I'm not saying that by any, that is, that's a great suggestion. But I'm also saying, at this point, if anyone's like, oh, it happened last year, we can go back, find the appropriate minutes, um, or I think it was, is it minutes or the agenda, whichever, and.
I can even put something together.
Yeah, find the link to those presentations that occurred prior, earlier this year, last year.
It does make sense. I do, I do understand as coming into a new position for sure.
I'm gonna sit where you can see me.
She's got, Josh is like, over there.
You have, it is obvious that you guys put a lot of work into the mission statements with the goals. There's no question about it in my mind. But do you really, do we need all of those goals? I mean, first of all, I think it's up to you, but I think the, used to be that you had two annual goals, and then you had your benchmarks and your objectives. You do remember that from your special education. And it just seems to me that maybe we need to focus back a little bit so that we can put our energy and efforts into that. I know you're gonna say that, that everybody has lots of goals, but.
That's not what it is.
Yeah, you're right. I apologize.
That's okay, Nancy, but it is one of my requests after last meeting. That's okay, Nancy, but it is one of my requests after last meeting, that we stop speaking for everybody. I'm really not addressing that at you, but just as a board. I left the last meeting feeling like the community thought I believed something, which I totally don't. But, so you're talking about special ed as two goals?
No, I'm just talking about in general, we talk, the general rule is to, to come up with two or three annual goals, supporting them with benchmarks, that we can mon- monitor to see if we're fulfilling our goals. And I think that that's how I would like to, I always train, so I would like to see goals, and I would like to see a real focus on, we talked about the academics. I know that you and I didn't agree with the academics, because we've had quite a little conversation, and the assessments of the academics. And, um, I would like to go back and revisit them, and I'd like to revisit some of these others, but I really, I think, you know, and I also, I'm a little bit concerned about the fact that we keep shutting down Lebanon School without having all the data yet.
Nobody's shutting down Lebanon Elementary School.
I know, but it keeps coming up that Lebanon is.
Public is not.
Yeah, can we not make sure that that's clear? Because I don't want that in the video.
Yeah, we're not trying to get Lebanon.
Well, I heard it a number of times, that the Lebanon School was gonna be shut down, and I, I do that.
It's not from us.
No, it is, it is just.
Actually, I was in the nine-five minutes, I mean, because I, I had to watch the video.
We did not see that.
Somebody did. I was pretty sure that it came off the board.
Just a caution.
Anyway, focus back.
Yeah, go ahead, finish.
This is a big organization, so I feel like, if we just focused on two or three goals for this whole organization, that doesn't address everybody's needs. I, I, in that whole goal setting or strategic plan, there were things that did get pulled out, that the community really wanted to see addressed. And I think if we narrow this down more, there are people who are gonna feel like we're letting things go.
We're not listening to them.
Right?
That is a fact that people have shared, is why get involved, because they don't listen to us anyway, so I do think that's a really valid point.
Oh. Josh, your turn. We'll go back.
So, talking, because we, you, hopefully, you're talking about assessments, I think that's what Sue was talking about, was wanting to have the conversation about assessments. When I mentioned at the last boarding, board meeting, that the NWEA through your assessment places kids on levels based on whether they scored fifty percent on grade level or not, that's, that's a fact. And there were a lot of eyebrows raised, like, is that serious? It is. And we're basing decisions on our students, whether they're advanced, proficient, basic or below basic, or whether they score fifty percent on grade level material. Don't think that that gives us much good information. And I am, I am, I'm asking to actually, let's, let's have a conversation about that, and is that really the assessment we want to be using, um, when it comes to that? When we talk about the, so, so I'm just gonna stay focused on assessments, because that was, that was the request. And so, that's, that's why I don't believe the NWEA is the appropriate measure, the appropriate assessment to make decisions about whether kids are reading or doing math on grade level. Fifty percent does not work in my class. That's a huge red flag if a kid scores fifty percent.
Well, and we're, I'm gonna have that discussion in November, because we're gonna see the NWEA data, right, from last year.
Yes.
Remember, we also have the MEAs too.
We don't, we don't.
We don't have them.
This year.
So I guess the.
I think we need some vocabulary in general, to be honest with you, for everybody, honestly, because things have changed, like, periodically throughout the past four years, in terms of what the assessments from the state level of Look-Di and all of that. And I know that Shannon did do that originally, and I am finding the, the minutes, you know, for that kind of stuff, but.
All I, my concern about assessment is changing it every year. You don't learn anything if you change the, oh, we're gonna do NWEAs this year, we're gonna do MEAs this year, we're gonna do whatever. We have whatever we decide, we gotta do it for three, four years, we've decided if it's working, if what you're doing is working. But anyway, to get back to the goals, um, so, am I hearing that we want just three goals? Maybe we pick some from what we've already been presented to us and tweet them if we don't quite like them? Do we want them to continue to do their last set?
Could we have two or three board goals that the board generates, that are, because we, I would think a lot of us said we would like to see strong academic goals with a baseline? And have the district goals that are based on the vision statements, that we have, so that we are measuring. I think it's a great idea that we're measuring those visions to see how we're making progress in them. I think that was one of the questions I would have asked last year, is about the five-year managed goal thing that there was.
Strategic plan.
Yeah, thank you. And I was speaking, I went, I wonder how we made out on the five-year plan, but I wasn't on the board, so I didn't know, didn't get the answers. But, um, on your strategic plan, is it, do I like strategic plan? Having goals that we can measure and move forward on and focus on, I think that's great. But I still would like to see the board generate some strong academ- personally, academic goals, reading and math and behavior, that we can measure and monitor with, I mean, that you can measure and monitor for us. And bring it to our attention, so we know what's going on, I'm sorry, I.
I think that was my question for Ally, when I asked her to clarify if it was board goals that she wanted, or what was she talking about? So, and it sounded different than what that was.
Well, I want.
And you're shaking your head, so I'm, I guess, yeah, continue that conversation, because I'm still not clear with what, what.
I think for this year, I feel comfortable going through what we worked on, because I, this is my first year on the board, so I'm very comfortable with this deeper dive in what's happening. I think maybe for the following year, we could start with some type of a workshop before the start of school, where we talk more about specific board goals for next year. I mean, or we could do it this year, but since it's a rush.
Could that be included in the, in the meeting that we have with.
The workshop.
The workshop this year.
In the summer, yeah, in, in August.
Oh, in August.
For, for the following year.
Yes.
So setting the goals in August for the follow, for that twenty, by twenty-six.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think the point I'm struggling with is that, we're talking about goals without talking about baselines. We need a baseline, where we stand.
Well, I think we're gonna find that out, yes.
But that's what I'm saying, we're having the goal discussion before having baseline data, right? And, and that's hard. It, we, if we could flip-flop that in the future, like, let's actually talk about the baseline data, you know, what it's, what it's been, and then, when you're looking at data, or, we have clarity about where we stand. All of us have clarity about where our district stands, and then I think the goal development becomes more obvious to us. Um, that would be my suggestion for the future.
Well, we're getting the baseline goal from last year's, we'll get that on the seventh. And after that presentation, then likely we should do the goals. Does that sound okay, Nancy?
No, it doesn't sound to me. We're getting data on a norm reference test that measures position in the classroom. It does not measure where, what the child has mastered. We cannot, we cannot write goals for mastery of academic subject if we don't know what they don't know or what they do know. Norm reference tests measure placement in the classroom, they compare kids in the classroom, is your kid smart, or is your kid doing better than this kid? And if you're, if you only know second grade material in the fifth grade, but you're doing better than any other kid in the class, you still only know second grade, and I'm exaggerating on purpose. But it's still only measuring where you are in that class. It does not tell us what you have learned about that grade level.
So you want us to do a whole separate test for everybody? That was, that is, that is a proposal.
We need to do that. And given the information on the news and the DOE about the NWA right now, I don't understand it, I haven't been able to figure it out, but it doesn't sound like the NWA is going to be, it's gonna be revised anyway, or something. Uh, you probably know a lot more about it than we do, but it doesn't.
Well, do, so, would you be able to present on October seventeen instead of the seventh?
Yeah.
Okay, so at our next meeting, Dr. Swiger will be in to talk about assessment, data.
Thank you very much. So, we're gonna table this whole goal thing from now?
I don't know.
Or what's the consensus here?
Two more areas.
Yeah, I would love to hear about the four area. Yeah, I was gonna say, like, the area after this is safety, and I think that that, school safety would be.
That's really important.
A priority to pursue, yes.
All of them.
Yes, they all are. I mean, yes, they all are, but I think, you know, I think, yes, maybe hold on the, anything measured by testing piece, but like, I think school safety can, I personally feel, can be preceded with, without further assessments for the kids. Um, and maybe engagement as well.
Okay, so one thing I just wanna clarify is that we were working on what we believe that you wanted. And that was to work through the strategic plan that our community, our staff, our administrators, town managers got together and created. And that was what our charge was, to take a look at the strategic plan and build SMART goals, measurable goals based on that. That is what we are attempting to do. So I just want to be enforced that that is the way you would like us to move ahead.
Like, we'd just like to say that's what I think the community wants, that's what I thought we were doing, and I do not wish to change the process at this point, personally.
Not for this year, I want it scored for next year. I agree with you, we're down, we're headed down this road already.
Yeah, even next year, though, I mean, the community saw this as a long-term plan, and unless we're gonna start over, I think.
Okay. Isn't your arm tired?
Glad you're tomorrow. I think personally, that having goals, measurable goals for the strategic plan is a great thing to have, as long as you don't overload yourself with so many goals you can't fill them all. I really think we need measurable goals for the strategic plan. I still think we need a baseline and academic goals, if our baseline tells us, we, we don't even know if we need academic goals, because we don't have a baseline. We don't know what the kids don't know or do know. So, I thank you for what you did. I think there's, most of them are pretty darn nice, but I might argue some of them are with my sore arm.
Well, we will have more information.
Yeah.
And that's, I just would like to be careful saying we have no idea where kids are. I, I don't know that that's true, and I don't assume that our teachers, I would don't.
I would agree with you, and I think that if you look at, in the audience, that your administrators, that they know where their kids are.
I think she's talking about the board, though, like, the board.
Yep, that's fair. Well, that's not what I'm hearing, actually. So I'm hearing that nobody knows, that we aren't using the right tests, and nobody knows where kids are, we only know compared to each other, and I don't think that's accurate. I just wanna finish what I'm saying, Nancy, and see what you're doing there, well, as you asked. And I, I'm really concerned about the negativity we're putting out without correction on videos. And I just want to say that I don't, I personally don't feel that it's true, that we have no idea what our, where our kids are.
Okay, we are good to go on to number seven? Main School Board Association Workshop.
Do you wanna start that? Would you like me to?
It's up to you.
Okay. Um, so, every year, there is a delegates' assembly for the main school boards association, it's coming up on October nineteenth. Um, Nancy really wanted this on the agenda, just to, to have it out there, to have some discussion, because we did not send anybody last year, I don't think so. So, it's coming up, and I think we, we just wanted to put it out on the radar. Um, for those of you who have attended, do you wanna talk a little bit about what that experience is like?
It's really interesting, because you get, choose these workshops, and people, you know, from uptowns, from Caribou to Kittery, same things that they're dealing with, that we're, you know, dealing with as a board. So it's kinda good to get a little reinforcement that we're not the only people that are going through this. Um, you know, and there's everything from, you know, special ed law, I mean, they have, they have presenters that are lawyers and everything, and they can give you all the, you know, details of all those things. If you only can do, go for one day, that's fine, or you can do two days.
Yes, so the workshops are basically presented, um, dur- throughout the summer, um, the main school board association reaches out to the, the various districts and says, if you're, if you have a topic that you think would be really interesting for other, other school boards to hear about, please present a proposal, and then they're chosen to, to be able to present. I've presented a couple of different times on different subjects throughout the past, you know, fifteen years or so. Um, it is a great opportunity for networking, just, and as, you know, as Nancy says, like, to learn that we're all sort of in the, we're all swimming in the wrong directions all over the place, all the time, together. It's, it's just the way it works. Um, but it does give you an opportunity to, like, just see what else is happening in different places. Um, and to look at things, not necessarily always from the same perspective, and always from the same specific lens, like, like the assessment case is important, but there is a multitude of other issues that are happening throughout the state that you might find really interesting, and may be able to, like, just bring, bring some knowledge back. Um, budgeting is talked about a lot, obviously, anything regarding, like, a lot of legal issues do come up. Um, spent a lot of time lately in terms of, like, the, the increased areas of homelessness and dealing with that, and how various districts are dealing with those aspects of this, you know? So, there's a lot of different options that you could look into. The other piece of it, in terms of, you don't need to be a delegate to go, anybody on the board is welcome, and can, we would love for you to attend. They are looking for a delegate from each school board, just because it's nice to have representation. Um, we have frequently not had a delegate, based on just the ability for people to go. Um, but it shouldn't stop you from, like, at least trying to attend if you can, if you can get the time, that's the hard part.
So there's three dates, the October nineteenth date, that's the delegates' assembly.
I thought that was the one for school board chairs.
Yes, yes. And then October twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth is a main school management association fall conference.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm talking about.
And that's the one that you have a lot of opportunities to take workshops, if you have the time, so there's a keynote speaker, and then there's Drummond and Woodson is there, going through some, some information, school nutrition changes and different shifts. So if you're interested in either of those, so the nineteenth is one day, the twenty-fourth could be one day, or the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth, you can just.
Send a gust up, by the way.
Yes, it was a gust up. So, um, if you wish to go, if you wanted to send Jen an email, um, she can give you more information for you really to decide, because of the catalog is out about, you know, what certain, you know, what sessions are happening. Um, and then she can sign you up if you, if you look at that and, or have some interest.
And I'll share a link just to all of you guys, so you can click on it and look at what's, what the information is about the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, all right.
Employment.
We have Paula Hughes that we're nominating this evening for the Excel teacher at Hanson and Lebanon Elementary School, and one day at Housie School. Um, our current, um, Excel teacher at Housie School has, um, asked to go, um, to decrease a day, so we have that opening. So this candidate, Paula, um, Hughes, that we're nominating, would be able to do both the Hanson-Lebanon Elementary and Housie School. So I think.
So she would be, that would be.
She would be, no, it would still be, it would be three and a half, three and a half days. Um, so, she is coming from Vernon Public Schools in Connecticut, where she was an instructional coach, and a class, longtime classroom teacher. Um, she, you know, had a, some corp- corporate business, uh, before going into education, so she's, she's really, a really well-rounded, um, teacher to come in for this position. So she, uh, they recently moved up to, um, Maine after she retired out of Connecticut, and, uh, is just really looking forward to this, uh, opportunity. So, that is Paula.
Do you have a motion? Or do you have any other question?
I make a motion. On second.
Any questions or suggestions?
Oh, sorry, I, I do wanna jump in. Can you repeat that, so, or can I get clarification? It was one day at Housie and two and a half days in L E S in Hanson?
Yes.
Okay, and this is the Excel program?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yes. Any other questions? Okay, all those who favor this person? Opposed?
That's it?
That's it?
Oh, wow. How's the bus driver situation?
We're still down.
Payable.
Still paying, yes.
Do we, this is a far ahead. Do we do first and second trips for buses?
We do at the elementary, at the elementary runs, we do, we do shifts. Not every single bus has a shift.
Right, right, yes, yes. There's a down, particularly in Earl, there's a downtown run, and then there's, so they usually make one.
Um, I, I remember growing up, like, our bus driver had their kids on the bus with them, which creates a really great employment opportunity for mothers with young children. Is that something that we're allowed to do at our district?
Yep, we just, actually, just, I think we missed the meeting, we talked about it, that's okay, but yes. So if you know anybody, who's got small children, they wanna get on a bus, send them over.
Yeah, we'll continue to put it in our newsletter and different places like that, and we are advertising on Indeed.
And are we level with area schools as well, okay now, or?
We are, we, we are close, and over some, and close to others, and a little under some others.
So, and we're just in the, we are just in the early stages of negotiating, which, yeah, I'll, I'll shut up.
It's not the superintendent.
Okay, it's superintendent.
Okay, so the first update is just that this is homecoming week, um, our football team is currently four and O. The second, this is our second, I believe our second year that we did a K twelve spirit week. So, we were hearing from parents that if they had children at the elementary school, and at the high school, or the middle school, that all different weeks for all different spirit weeks were happening, so we tried to focus. So we have just five themes for this past week, so it's K twelve, which is a really nice kinda larger district thing. So that's been, you know, a thing and fun. We have three hundred athletes that are participating in fall sports. And as I mentioned in the district newsletter, you know, some of our clubs and different other activities are coming, so as soon as we get, you know, updates and information on that, we'll share that out as well. So just a couple other things to note. Our Nolton School Behavior Interventionist, Missy Royce, who presented last year with Michelle Kenniston, when we were at the school for a tour, presented on P B I S for us, just an overview of what that is. She will be presenting at the National P B I S Leadership Forum next week. So she will be working on, her topics will include coaching and keeping teams implementing with fidelity. So, P B I S is Positive Behavior Intervention Support, and we'll certainly be talking a little bit more about that. But that goal is, for P B I S, is to provide evidence-based and effective behavioral supports to schools. And all three, all, all three, I say, all three towns, so all four of our elementary schools are using P B I S, which is really nice, because it's provided a level of consistency of how we are approaching, you know, working on management and rules within the school setting, but also a real bonus has been in our, in our buses. You know, our bus drivers are, are working in tandem with our schools on P B I S, and it's really helped. So we'll talk through some of that, probably at the Code of Conduct when we have that meeting as well. So that's just a piece, that's, that's, kudos to Missy, because she's put a lot of time and work into that. During our busiest, one of our busiest seasons is summer, when we have all new hires and we have to process all the paperwork for new hires. We were notified that we were going to be audited by Maine PERS, which is the public, you know, the retirement system. And it was, again, during one of our very busy times. Mary Ellen Bourbon handles our payroll, pretty much, and so this fell to her. And so the part that we had, that we were audited on is the P L D portion, which is staff that don't really qualify under a teacher or administration contract piece. So it's more like the drivers and the custodians. We had to provide information and documentation twenty years back, so from two thousand and four. And everything was done in a stellar fashion, and we just wanna give a public shout-out to Mary Ellen Bourbon for this. There were a few things that were resolved in a moment, and just the ability, and Denise is shaking her head, but the ability to pull information from two thousand and four, you know, like paper copies.
Think about what things were happening in June, or for now.
Right, right, so it was manual, a lot of manual labor.
Some lovely handwriting by Debbie DuRoy.
So, kudos.
They're not okay.
Yes, we came out very good. I don't know if you wanna say more to that, but we just really wanna accentuate how hard Mary Ellen worked on this.
But thank you to Mary Ellen.
Okay, and then a few other pieces. We've mentioned the Code of Conduct is meeting on October seventeen.
Yeah, I'm sending out a note to our, so we have three, well, we have three board members who signed up, which was Ms. Lovejoy, Mr. Tabor, and Ms. Newbert. So our, our plan is to meet at five thirty, prior to the board meeting, so that we're trying to, like, stack things so that we're not having multiple nights out for people.
So what time, five thirty?
Five thirty, and we'll meet at the, in the high school, right?
And then we had our initial meeting with the Teamsters and the Transportation Representatives. And that was a very good, productive initial meeting, we have another meeting coming up in two weeks. Again, those negotiation meetings are during the day, because they can't meet after school, because they're, they're driving. So those, that's that. I think last week it was, that we received the letter of intent to negotiate with the Teachers Association. So we've asked them for some dates, so anybody on that committee, once we get some dates from the Teachers Association, we will share those dates with you to see when we can find a common time for that initial discussion. The support staff negotiations, we haven't had a reach-out from that association yet, so we don't have any timeline for that. Typically, what happens is, if you're new to the negotiations, we do wait to get the intent from the, the group that's negotiating. So they have to initiate that, and they have not done so at this point in time. So we don't have any dates or any information at this point, but it will be coming, I'm sure. We have a policy committee that's going to meet, the first policy that we're going to be looking at is Title Nine. There've been some federal changes to Title Nine, so typically what we do is we do a first read, which typically goes out in the, in a board meeting, so we, we would have it go out with the agenda so that everybody can look at it, and the committee, we have a smaller committee that works on tweaking it. Some things we don't tweak, because if it's a federal law, and if the lawyer says, the law firm says, this is what we need to comply with. So sometimes changes don't happen in those ways, but in other policies, there, there's a little more leeway in, in the scope of what we're doing. So as soon as we are ready for that, it will be in a couple weeks, not to bump up against Code of Conduct. So we're trying to really, because some of you have, have signed up for different, you know, more than one committee, so we're trying not to.
So you have enough for each committee?
We do have enough for each committee, yes, yes, thank you. And then, one other thing is that Sue offers building tours for new board members, or any board members that want to come in during the day. This is different than the evening tours that we're doing in the different buildings.
Take you all around if you're watching, just let me know.
So if you're interested in that, please let her know. And then, if that doesn't work, and if you wanted to go in to visit a school at a different time, we, we're funneling those requests through us, so if you just wanna email us, and if you wanted to go into a school, we, we will then help set, kinda set that up between the school and your timing. But just know that that may not happen, like, a quick turnover. It may not be, I wanna come in in five minutes, just because, you know, we. Yeah, you have to set it up ahead of time. So those are, those are the superintendent updates.
Next one.
Other. Other concerns.
Couldn't it be something good?
Yeah, or something really positive.
Like, look at your shirt. Good news always.
I can, I can dream. No others?
Do we have any public input from anyone out there?
All right, never. I make apologies to her.
All those who favor?
Welcome back, Robert. Good to see you.
Who seconded that, I apologize?
Jared. You seconded, did you second?
Oh, okay, all right, I'm going with Ms. Lovejoy.